And one is the budget, of course. And on this one, the one that you will see what's different from... No, I think Heine Fund was already added. No, it was changed. It was changed. Okay, on Heine Fund, you'll see a shuffle of funds from the contracted service line items and the supply line items. Those were the only changes there. Everything else that we had discussed, I believe, when you got the draft copy was already in there. Is that correct, Nick?
With the exception of the mayor's staff salaries.
Okay.
When I talked to Paula, she said that she would feel safe charging the court computer fund a little extra. I didn't know if we wanted to go 50/50 on that. Last time, we only charged $5,000 against that. So this has $21,000 for the general fund. And the court computer fund has $9,000. So we raised it from $5,000 last year to $9,000.
So you did 25% last year. You bumped it up this year.
Sort of a ballpark number. I don't know if it was exactly 25.
Okay.
We did $5,000, so it was last year.
Okay.
And then we raised it down to $9,000 this year.
So we probably could actually go higher. And we can think about that. I mean, because we can adjust that during the course of the year. But I'm thinking we could probably go higher. Even if we did 50%.
We're trying to do that now, though.
No.
No.
But, you know, think about 50% on that. There's a big balance in that fund. And of course, the only thing is that we don't want to get into a habit, once we get caught up in that fund, of making that appropriation higher than the receipts that come in every year. So that's something to just keep in mind. But we can make that adjustment later on in the year. So I think that pretty much covers the budget. Did anybody...I haven't had any phone calls, so I'm assuming everybody's good with it, right? On the same page with that. Okay, and then we have three additional ordinances here, which have to do wage salary increases. And just for information for our residents, these are the only raises that are being put in place for this year. And they are the village solicitor, who is going to get a $500 for the entire year. He's going to go from $10,000 to $10,500.
Right.
Okay? And then for our street commissioner, he's going to get a raise of $150 a month, which is the first raise he has had for 24 years for this position. And the green foreman for the Heine Fund. Russ has actually volunteered this past year to do this, administer this, the laborers and the scheduling and so forth. And he has done that with no pay at all. And so Heine Fund has agreed to pay him $150 a month for his services for that particular position. And that is all three of the salary ordinances. And then we will do a simple motion to appoint Russ to the Heine Fund foreman position, since it's now a paying position.
Linda, can you just tell everyone in the audience how the Heine Fund gets its funding?
The Heine Fund gets its funding from a trust fund, basically. The principal...
Explain about the Heine Fund. What Heine Fund is. What is the Heine Fund?
The Heine Fund is the piece of property down by the church, which was left to the village with a trust. Rebecca's saying no.
The trust...the Heine Fund was given as a trust by Samuel K. Heine to pay maintenance on the village green and the old township cemetery that is next to the church. It doesn't own property at all. And that's...you were starting to say that it has ownership or some sort of...all it does is pay for the maintenance.
Right, the money itself.
Right.
The money itself. But what were you asking to explain?
I just want people to know what the Heine is.
What the Heine Fund is.
Yeah, I just wanted to know what the area is.
You're talking...he's talking about property. I'm talking about money.
Right. But what's the money going to, to maintain the...
To maintain that property.
Our property, the village property. The village property in front of the church.
Well, that...we're saying village property because that property was left to the village, correct, Rebecca?
No, no, it's the old village green. It was given by Turhan Kurtland in 1795, I think.
What was it?
The village. Not the village...well, it's actually the township green, but it's maintained by the village. It probably is owned by the township.
So the money is used to maintain that piece of property. However, the principle of that trust is not touched by the village.
Right.
It is actually currently...Rebecca is the trustee, and the Heine Fund board actually make all the decisions for the expenditure of that money. So the only thing that the village actually touches, as far as the money goes, is the interest and dividends that come to the village from that principal amount. Okay? So all the kids now know what they can explain when Coach Chris don't ask you, "How does this work?"
Well, Rebecca, are you saying that township owns the...
I have no idea, actually. But historically, if you do research on greens, they were established before there was a village. So my guess is that the township illegally was given the property by Turhan Kurtland. You'd have to do a little title search to find out when the village started whether it's got green. No one was maintaining the cemetery. Mr. Heine, who was a lawyer in Cleveland and lived in the house across the street, left in his village money to maintain the cemetery, and he expanded it to include the green. Okay? And it was in the '50s, so we've been willy-nilly using the income from the trust for a long time.
Not willy-nilly.
No, willy-nilly, because we don't owe loans. I mean, we're not sure who owns the land.
Well, there were deeds.
But it's very defined also of what land it is that we're maintaining.
And it's defined that the money is to go towards that land specifically, that part...
Right, the Heine Fund committee, we know what we're maintaining.
And they can't spend it on other things?
No, and you cannot spend it on anything.
Pizzas and hamburgers.
No, no, right. Nor maintenance of this land for us, or the Peterson apartments. I mean, there are other kinds of village.
And the village does have the original will upstairs, which has been audited. And so we have to follow the same criteria of handling the money that comes to us from the trust as we do for all public money, because we handle it physically. Thanks, Dave.
So did you talk about appointing Russ to the foreman? I mean, talking about salary. All right, so anyone else have any items for caucus? Mr. Russell, you have any?
No, I have my report. I'm thinking I should wait until my time, maybe even have an executive session to talk about it.
I do. We are going to have a...let me back this up. I'm going to refrain. Anyone else?
Were you going to talk about the proceedings in Struthers this week?
Um, no, not really. Other than the date set, that's all.
Mr. Islestein is going to try to rebuild his gazebo. I offered that we could get together and guide him through the process once more. I reached out to his counsel, Transusablo, to do that. I've not heard anything back.
Still up.
He's supposed to be torn down.
Make up the air conditioning.
The gazebo over by the village pantry is to be torn down. It's not already torn down. It should be torn down very soon. And Mr. Islestein wants to rebuild it. So we said we would walk him through the process so that he would do it in court with our ordinances, rather than like he did last time. But I offered to meet with his counsel, and I've not heard anything back.
Well, I had a discussion with Jim Braver, you know, our tree administrator. And he's watching very closely, because they trim a lot of trees around here. But instead of just whacking them off at the top, he's going to have to take them down because he said it looks better. There's some trees along here, and some trees on Main Street.
Joe, do you know what their code is? Some of the trees have pink ribbons tied around them, some have red Xs, and some have red dots. And we were trying to figure out what does that mean.
I don't know, Linda. I tried, but I didn't know about it.
We had had some discussion, you probably remember this in the past, I think several times it's been brought up, about the trees going when you go up the hill here towards Riverside.
Yep.
And how when those trees in the spring, they get really cool and you cannot see the traffic light.
Yep.
And notice that those trees are all marked with a red X.
Yep.
So they're coming down, but they're in the wires, too.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I know you brought that up several years ago.
Yeah, well, we actually saw a semi blow right through that light, because by the time he would see the light, couldn't stop the truck.
Did you have any luck with the school board?
Yes, I talked to...they called me. We had a work session last night. He called me yesterday about 3 o'clock, because I sent him an email telling him specifically what he wanted. And he was under the impression that the main service is on school property. He said, "Wouldn't it be easier just to move it back to here?" I said, "No, it's on our property, but the lines extend up to yours."
We're paying for the...we pay for the electricity that goes over there.
So I think he's clear on that. And I assume they did something last night, I haven't talked to him today.
Okay.
But it's...yeah, it's in the motion. And if not, they have another meeting this coming Monday, their normal meeting. So it should be up for sure around.
Yeah. And we're going to have to do a lot of work on it pretty quickly here.
Yeah, understand the situation. But they're going to give us something right into it.
Yes, due resolution.
Okay.
I met, sort of through my wife's acquaintance, Jason Wilson, who is Charlie Wilson's son. I've known who he was, but never met him. We were at the same kids' events and stuff like that. But he works for the governor's office of Appalachia. And we are considered to be in Appalachia from Ash to Beulah all the way down to wherever it goes. And he came in...he came here Friday to village hall, and Paula gave him my work address. So he came in and talked about an hour in the office. And he told me that...and he's going to come in, hopefully in April or May, and talk to us. But he said there's approximately $7 million of state funds that he oversees through Eastgate also, that we could probably get something through. He said a lot of times they do, like sewers and water lines and infrastructure projects, but there's other things they do. And he says they'll...a lot of them, they'll fill in the blanks. If you get a grant and you don't get all of the stuff, like say it was 80/20, and we couldn't come up with a match, they could come and fill those gaps in for you. So I was surprised to hear all that. He's...seems like a good...he's well-connected through the government and governor's office, and there's a lot of people. So I'll have him come in and tell us exactly what he does, but that's another resource for us for funding in the future. He lives in Columbia, and he's a young guy, nice guy. Do you know him?
I do. My wife, Melissa, and his wife, Leah, are good friends. And I just met him a few weeks ago when we were talking. He's been in that position for about five years in the governor's office. And I never thought about connecting here, but certainly a great resource.
Yeah.
He's very nice.
He was a senator for five years in every district in the Smithsonian, basically. He would have to run against him, and he's a pastor, and he got out of it. So got a lot of connections.
Another new source.
Yeah, sure can hurt. And I don't think a lot of people know about that, so.
Well, we have a couple minutes here. I talked to Gary Giorio today, and construction's going to start on the sidewalk as soon as the weather's better.
Because it's a surprise.
I'll go out to the high school.
Yep.
MS is handling that. And I went over this whole plan that you brought. And the only other thing that we can look at is maybe for safety, an ODOT grant. And I took...we had a street meeting, and our lights are pretty antiquated, our traffic lights. So he's going to look at that. The application is due April 30th. However, Russ said he could get, use traffic lights and store them, or put them up as necessary. Because apparently, we don't have...am I right here, Chris? We haven't had any accidents to speak of, or we didn't major maintenance problems, right?
Well, it's not paving problems.
Yeah, but, I mean...
Yeah, no accidents.
Not enough to really get Eastgate to swing us.
Right.
So...but we're going to look at that anyhow.
Yeah.
And that's a 90/10 grant.
Okay.
But the rest is pretty straightforward, and we don't comply with any of this stuff.
I think our controllers are the problem. That's the controllers are the problem, not the lady.
Yeah, that started with, yeah.
We have some options. Anyone? Tell us your opinion.
I don't have any.
Am I leading executive session, right?
Yeah.
Concerning what personnel?
No. I might classify it as pending litigation. I'm debating whether or not we need to talk about it. I don't know. I'm still thinking about it. It's concerning that the tree issue, as most pending litigation seems to concern tree issues. I'll feel counsel next to where we are.
I asked them, and they said that not really. And yes, you could in a roundabout way, but that's not really what they like to do.
Okay.
He just told me something. I forget what it was. $165,000 was totally funded for this project. I forget where it was and what it was, but he said that, you know, people just don't know about it. It's another source of revenue that's overlooked. Kathy Zook, does anyone know Kathy Zook? She works for Eastgate. She's the one that's like, she works for the projects, but he gets the funding line up after she recruits him. I know she is their means. So sit down with Russ and Joe or somebody and sort of map out some things we think we need to do. Sure there's something infrastructure that needs repaired when it's... Yeah, or...yeah, whatever.
Or the dead end, is it Arlington?
Yeah, right from across from North Alabama.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alverna.
Yeah. I guess that's paving, but that also could be water or whatever. I'm sure we'll find something that falls under our lap that we need to do soon.
Yeah, the one thing that we have to consider is that, you know, last year, we did that paving project, and what was that, about 92,000?
About 98,000.
98,000. This year, the reason...and you didn't have deficits in any budget. This year, we do. And the reason we have it is if you take the $65,000, because we're going to buy a new truck, and the increase in police protection that we are going to put on for the extra shifts, there's $100,000 right there. So anything else that would go over and above that would dip me into also that starlight system, just so everybody's aware, and how fast you want to see it disappear. But, you know, we're already at the same rate practically as last year, as what we did last year. And, you know, I mean, we're all agreed, obviously, that the police protection is imperative right now with the changes in heroin trafficking and the issue we had in center of town here. So we...at least we're all, you know, in agreements with the fact that safety for our residents is first and foremost right now.
All right, 7:30. First stand for pledge leaders.
The pledge leaders, you see the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call members.
Mark Sette.
Here.
Bill Dunavat.
Here.
And Robert Flimmer.
Here.
Joe Mazur.
Here.
Linda Serna.
Here.
Chris Yash.
Here.
Acceptance of the minutes from the previous council meeting. Question of the way to reading and approves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed. Notification of meetings and events to the public and the news media. Bleefer.
No, we don't have any.
Finances?
None right now.
Legislation?
Nothing.
Police?
Excuse me. Bleefer Gausi is going to call you.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll arrange some. He didn't call you yet.
Okay. Police?
Uh, nothing until next month.
Streets?
April 15th. So next meeting here at 6:30.
Courts, ARB.
April 3rd, here village hall, 7:00 PM.
Planning. 7 o'clock tomorrow night here. Also, historic preservation will meet on the 27th at 7 o'clock.
Board of zoning fuels?
Nothing scheduled.
Western Reserve Fire District?
Uh, the Western Reserve Fire District is going to change their April meet date to Wednesday, April 23rd at 7:30 PM.
Forest board?
For Tuesday, the 25th of March at 7:30.
And Heine Memorial?
We have a meeting on the 19th.
We have a meeting.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, 19th.
Tomorrow, 3:00.
2:30 maybe.
2:30, okay.
Okay, a report from mayor. Don't have anything in writing. The February violations bureau account has been balanced, and the February court report has been done. I mentioned Jason Wilson. I'll try to get him in here later. And that's about all we have. Question of the mayor's report.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Reposed. Report from fiscal officer.
Okay, I'm circulating around the list of bills to be paged. February numbers, you have those. The appropriation ordinance will be added now, so that will give us a better idea showing up in the figures for March. And I'm circulating around the bank record with mandatory reports for...there's... and the report.
Make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed.
About what? What is the update out?
This is the new, looking at a copy that should leave finance for these. Good for him, saying this week.
Okay, I've got a couple things. As Bill mentioned, we do have a planning committee meeting on the 19th here village hall at 7:00 PM. On the agenda, we will have a replat of lot number 59, part of 58 and part of 60. And that's actually the corner of Riverside Drive, just off the corner of Riverside Drive and 24, across from Union Elementary School. Nick was kind enough to put together a list of residents that joined the property, above the property. And we did receive one of those back, but other than that, we sent out, was it 27?
About 27 on the board.
I thought it was 27. So we got one of those back, but we tried our best. In addition to that, I have a trial date set for May 9th for the Yellow Creek Theater Pavilion. That is not a pre-trial, that is a judge trial. In addition to that, I've had quite a few calls, one on Diana, one on Evergreen. Unfortunately, not able to find violations. Those residences, I had a call about Second Street residence, and I'm gaining compliance there. Sent a letter to 24 Poland...I'm sorry, sent a letter to 24 Poland Manor about the exterior condition of the home, and have not had a response back. That was a, basically a letter of inquiry, saying what are their plans to rectify the situation. So I haven't received anything back from them. And 12 Poland Manor, it's my opinion that we move to cite them.
Do what?
Move to cite them. You know, we had already...we'd sent them a letter saying, hey, you're in violation of a nuisance ordinance. It's time to cite.
Good.
They came with their check.
Okay, that's great. They did come to pick up their, I think it was $2,000 check that we had never cashed.
And I invited Paula to go ahead and give it back, because we were not going to accept the money at that time for a new permit. And I was hoping that they would take that money. And I was under the impression they were working on the property. Is that not true?
No.
Not going to.
Clean up concrete.
No, they did take some concrete.
Yeah, yeah. One truckload, I watched them, yeah.
But I did offer us, Paula, to give back the check for the permit. I said, "We're not going to take it at this time."
Okay, how do we go about citing?
I got it.
Turn you on, Scott.
I'll take care of it. On issue, I'll write them a citation. Russ will serve it, and we'll do the same thing that we're doing right now down in Struthers Court.
Good.
Make it happen.
And once we gather the information, then it goes down to the Struthers prosecutor, Turney Leone, to review it and decide if there's a charge in the press. According to our ordinance, he did on Mr. Islestein's property. I believe he will on this property as well, under the nuisance and evasion statute or ordinance.
Now, do you pre-check that with them?
I did.
You checked it?
I reviewed the ordinance first, and talked about what information to gather. And then I talked to Turney Leone after he gathers it to see if there are any questions, and we talked this week. And we have, you know, ongoing communication as the case proceeds. Every time the date goes down, and there's a pre-trial, then we'll talk, Turney Leone and I, about what happened, what to do next.
What would be the timeline?
It's only thing, the court runs a little slow. They are only in session Monday, Wednesday, and Friday in the morning period. And you're probably wishing at six months.
Oh, boy. Summer's going to be gone.
Four months probably initially, but, you know, Mr. Major, I mean, they usually take between six months and a year to complete a case.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, if we just take the Yellow Creek Theater Pavilion, that process started, I believe it would have been July. And we are obviously here in April, and I've got a court date for May. So you do the math, that's...
Six and 12 months.
So one of the things that I've tried to talk to people, because I do take phone calls from residents, is about managing their expectations when it comes to timeframe.
Okay, thank you. Actually, accept the treasurer's report.
Sette.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chief, police, and street commissioner. Actually, accept the superintendent's reports.
Sette.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Forgot the solicitor's report.
I forget, yeah, usually the best part of a meeting. I think I'd rather talk about it in executive session, the update on the two properties that we discussed, you know, and the status of where we are.
Nothing else presents up?
No.
Okay. Report from engineer.
No.
Okay. Reports from outstanding committees of council, finances, wage, audit, and insurance. Reports from outstanding committees of council, finance, wage, audit, and insurance.
As far as finance is concerned, I did give you the list of upcoming events that finance will be dealing with. Next on the agenda will be the renewal, we'll get that ball rolling, probably in about a month, we'll start the process for the renewal. Also, I am working on a, putting a policy together for retention of public records. As you know, the past couple audit reports that we've had, they've recommended that we put a policy in place, actually it's a mandate that we put a policy in place. Since I wasn't actually able to write policy at that point in time, I can write policy now and I'm writing it. So, we have, we have a sample to go by, and we're going to get that put together, and we're going to pass it before they come for the next audit. We have any idea when?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, so that's on the, also on that list of things that I gave you that we're going to be working on. Also checking, Joe, on the permissive tax, which, that'll need to be filed by July the first, so we'll get that going as well.
That's a great point.
Question, to accept? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Police and fire?
Uh, nothing.
Legislative policy? Street sidewalks and drains? And blooper?
Nothing.
Reports from boards, planning commissions?
Nothing.
Board of Southern Appeals?
Nothing.
Architecture report?
Nothing at this time.
Forest board? Hine Memorial?
Nothing we really need to watch.
And Western Reserve Fire District?
Uh, nothing, report.
Reports from special committees? Communications from residents?
I'm Marion Gillette, thirty-two Audubon Lane, Poland Village. I'm here this evening as a representative of the SASBAS, that's Sisters and Brothers Against Substray and Sludge, and don't laugh. We are a group of Poland area residents who organized a couple of years ago when we learned the possibility that drilling rights might be leased for land under the Poland Municipal Forest. I'm going to read a statement that was prepared by our group in response to an inquiry by a local television station following the seismic activity in Poland Township last week. And this is the statement that was given to them. We, SASBAS, are not seismologists. However, like others with science and engineering backgrounds, we have received the data, who have reviewed the data, we think it more likely than not that there is a nexus between the recent seismic activity and the fracking at the new well in the township. Given that the well site is at or near the epicenter of all the recent seismic activity, this seems more than just coincidence. We believe that Poland Village Council's decision not to permit fracking in the Poland Woods was a wise and proper decision. Sadly, the Poland Township trustees' decision to permit this activity in the township may well have long-range effects on this community, including increased air pollution, increased truck traffic, noise pollution, and as we've seen, seismic disturbances. SASBAS is considering future educational forums like the one we presented at Holy Family in March 2012. In the meantime, we hope that our elected leaders will take advantage of the many educational forums and resources available to them, and become more aware of the potential downsides to this technology. We feel that you, as decision-makers for our community, need to be well-informed about activities that could have negative impacts on our community. One of our members, Rachel Obaska, will be giving you information on some excellent opportunities to learn more about the processes and possible side effects of fracking. The recent earthquakes have been a wake-up call. We will be here, we will continue to monitor our activities, and we will look to you to do the right thing for our community. Thank you.
I'm Rachel, Rachel Obaska, and I live at forty-eight Audubon Lane. And the fortunate coincidence that next week, there's going to be a week-long informational opportunity at YSU. It's been organized by a professor, a geologist. And what's really exciting is that one week from today, there will be a lecture at Moser Hall from seven to nine P.M., given by Dr. Ray Beirstorfer. He's a geologist at YSU. The title is "Science of Shale Gas: Geology, Seismology, and Environmental Impacts." And then the next day, on Wednesday, at the same time, from seven to nine P.M. at Moser Hall, there will be a talk by Dr. Anthony Ingraffia. He's a nationally-known expert on this, and in fact, he is a professor of civil and environmental engineering at Cornell University. And his talk will be about the science of shale gas, the latest evidence on the wells, methane emissions, and implications for policy. So, we'll be there, and we really hope that you have an opening in your schedule and you could come to these interesting free and nearby events. So, I brought some flyers. Hope to see you. Thank you.
I ask to be recognized by the chair. I'm Eleanor Zadiker, I serve on the Board of Education. Just to help you about last night's meeting, we did not discuss the electric service.
That's great.
Had you been with us, I think you would understand why, but it was not our topic. And also, I would like to request, what is the purpose of the Hine Fund? The purpose of the trust? No, the purpose, that would be the base value, the principal value. The principal has changed and properly reversed, she's still here because she is the trustee, can tell you. Approximately five hundred thousand dollars? And you, you realize maybe about five percent?
Yes.
Good, that's wonderful. I just wanted to know that, because it's been a topic forever and ever, the Hine Fund, and all of the wonderful things that happened, but I thought, what is that purpose? Give us an idea of what you work with. It actually was much higher than that, as you can imagine, when we went through your session. It also took some whatever debt, and it's recovered since then. Well, that's good. Many dips have started to come back very well, but thank you, that's all I have to say.
Eleanor, if you could, unless, you have a meeting next Monday, correct?
Yes, we do.
If you guys could address that at some point, get that resolved for the electrical stuff?
We'll have to request that it's on the agenda, so I'll ask the superintendent.
We need to start working on it, and I want to do it the right way.
Well, not to have misunderstandings or good intentions with perhaps some conversation, we don't want that to happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Ron Baron, I live at six eighty-nine Rock Green Street here in Poland. I want to strongly support the impact, Marion Gillette, just made. And I was sitting thinking about the women of Poland in the nineteen fifties, because that's when I was dating my wife, and I knew the activities of the village club, which my mother-in-law belonged to, and the activities of the garden club, which she also belonged to. They were very, very concerned about their teas and their luncheons, and their flower arranging, and their social activities. And they were wonderful women, and I salute them. But I have to say that my mother-in-law, Babe Johnston Welsh, would be extremely proud of the SAS members that she couldn't even imagine would be doing what they're doing now. Educating themselves and taking a stand on the quality of life in Poland, Ohio, the quality of air, the quality of our drinking water, and they're looking at it from a rational, scientific, logical point of view. So I hope that you take these women of Poland extremely seriously. I know my mother-in-law would.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Valerie Dearing, I live at eleven Michigan Avenue. I've been receiving a lot of information from the U.S. Geological Service about the earthquakes that have happened here, and I know I've sent you some information. If you would like for me to continue doing that, let me know. If any of you would like to give me your email, I receive information daily on this. I'm pretty well-connected with a large group of people throughout Ohio who are working on this, as well as the issue of water, keeping the water pure and clean for us to drink. Right now, there are two fracking wells, or there's one fracking well with one planned down, I think it's Beaver Lake, Columbia, Yellow Creek feeds that into Pine Lake, and then it sped through Poland into Lake Hamilton. So, if there was to be any problems with that well, and the next one that is planned, there's another one planned right next to a housing development, we would lose our water at Lake Evans, that's where we get our water. So, we're monitoring it, we're watching it, we have a lot of people on it, and we don't want to see a disaster, because I've been seeing so many throughout Pennsylvania, what happened in Virginia, or West Virginia, with losing their water. People have left Charleston in droves, they're coming here, they're coming anywhere they can get water. It would be a shame for that to happen here, wouldn't it? So, I'll have a little notice that I'll, or a little piece of paper that I'll pass around to your emails if you'd like. I know I sent you some things too, just because I had you written.
It's appreciated.
Okay.
They're good.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, any new business? Any old business? Motion to ordinances and resolutions?
I make a motion to waive the three readings passed by emergency and ordinance to set the two thousand and fourteen budget appropriations.
Second. Rule call.
Mark Kacet?
Yes.
Bill Dunavitt?
Yes.
Robert Lemmer?
Yes.
Joseph Mazer?
Yes.
Linda Sarnik?
Yes.
Chris Yash?
Yes.
A motion for an ordinance to make permanent appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the village of Poland, county of Mahoning, state of Ohio during the year two thousand and fourteen, and declaring an emergency.
Second. Rule call.
Mark Kacet?
Yes.
Bill Dunavitt?
Yes.
Robert Lemmer?
Yes.
Joe Mazer?
Yes.
Linda Sarnik?
Yes.
Chris Yash?
Yes.
Motion to waive the three readings passed by emergency and ordinance for setting the salary of the village solicitor.
Second. Rule call.
Mark Kacet?
Yes.
I'm not the mayor.
Can I move?
Bill Dunavitt?
Hmm.
Make a three.
Oh, yeah. Robert Lemmer?
Yes.
Joe Mazer?
Yes.
Linda Sarnik?
Yes.
Chris Yash?
Yes.
A motion for an ordinance setting the salary of the village solicitor effective April one, two thousand and fourteen, and declaring an emergency.
Second. Rule call.
Mark Kacet?
Yes.
Bill Dunavitt?
Yes.
Robert Lemmer?
Yes.
Joseph Mazer?
Yes.
Linda Sarnik?
Yes.
Chris Yash?
Yes.
Motion to waive the three readings for an ordinance setting salary of the street commissioner.
Second. Rule call.
Mark Kacet?
Yes.
William Dunavitt?
Yes.
Robert Lemmer?
Yes.
Joe Mazer?
Yes.
Linda Sarnik?
Yes.
Chris Yash?
Yes.
An ordinance setting the salary of the village street commissioner effective April first, two thousand and fourteen, and declaring an emergency.
Second. Rule call.
Mark Kacet?
Yes.
William Dunavitt?
Yes.
Robert Lemmer?
Yes.
Joe Mazer?
Yes.
Linda Sarnik?
Yes.
Chris Yash?
Yes.
A motion to waive the three readings passed by emergency, an ordinance setting salary of the Hine Fund green foreman.
Second. Rule call.
Mark Kacet?
Yes.
William Dunavitt?
Yes.
Robert Lemmer?
Yes.
Joseph Mazer?
Yes.
Linda Sarnik?
Yes.
Chris Yash?
Yes.
An ordinance setting the salary of the Hine Fund green foreman effective April one, two thousand and fourteen, and declaring an emergency.
Second. Rule call.
Mark Kacet?
Yes.
William Dunavitt?
Yes.
Robert Lemmer?
Yes.
Joseph Mazer?
Yes.
Linda Sarnik?
Yes.
Chris Yash?
Yes.
A motion to appoint Russell Baby as Hine Fund foreman.
Second.
Wait. I don't know.
He does appointments.
He does appointments.
Recommend you appoint, but you have to appoint. I suggest you appoint Russell Baby to Hine Fund.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the mayor to appoint Russell Baby to Hine Fund foreman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, any other motion to ordinances and resolutions? Second and third readings. Presentation of the bills.
Make a motion to waive the bills to pay.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions from the news media? All right, remarks by counsel.
I'd just like to thank all of the SAS members and people supporting SAS who came out tonight to give us this information, and we're very fortunate to have you in this community.
Paul?
Well, I, again, I appreciate all of your work of SAS and BAS in regards to the fracking issue. Thank you for your help and support.
Chris?
Nothing.
Mark?
Tomorrow is the last four, four days of our month.
Calendar-wise at least, not otherwise.
Bill, thanks for the plan, it should be easy, with all the hard work, and Linda especially, all of your time, and all the work together.
I'd just like to mention that Dick Ayers and the wife Julia both in a green dryer, they're having really bad physical problems.
Motion to suspend the order day regarding radiation, possibly potentially. Second. Rule call.
Sorry. Thought we were about to laugh. Mark Kacet?
Yes.
William Dunavitt?
Yes.
Robert Lemmer?
Yes.
Joseph Mazer?
Yes.
Linda Sarnik?
Yes.
Chris Yash?
Yes.
You guys are free to?